For three or on the Zoom link, which is on the back of the agenda.
Bless you.
This is a joint meeting, so I'll call the select board to order first. May I have a roll call, please?
Chris Flex here.
Paul Brady present.
Derek Craig present.
David Farad here.
Ellen Mar present. I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, which is the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? No? Okay, Mrs. Estino, would you like to call your group to order?
I would. So this is the Cohasset Advisory Committee joint meeting with the Select Board on Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, and most of us are participating virtually. Mrs. Mar?
Yes.
Can you tell me if Mark Cameron is in the audience?
Yes, he is.
Great, okay. So roll call, please. Fran Collins? Fran? Fran Collins, you're on mute. Okay, we'll go back to him. Mike Barclay.
Mike Barclay, present.
Mark Maggi.
Maggi present.
Meg Wheeler.
Meg Wheeler present.
Vince Thornton.
Vince Thornton present.
And Mark Cameron. Fran Collins? He's still having his dinner, I'm sorry. Let me just text him.
You have a quorum without him, correct?
Yes, so we can go ahead and start.
Okay, so, um, thank you, Mrs. Estino. So we're sure. Yes. Oh, you just got a quorum. That's okay. Would you like to call to order?
Identify themselves. Paul's car, take our present. Just less key.
John Leskey present.
And Mr. Dial are not present, but Chair is present, Craig McClellan. Get to support three members, and I would only call the March 11th, 2025.
Great, thank you. Excellent. So we're here tonight to talk about the FY 2026 school budget review. It's just going to be a review. We will, I'd like to, once the school department is finished presenting, kind of be orderly in our questions, and let's not repeat each other with the same questions. And, and focus on, focus on the pertinent things. We will, after the presentation, Mrs. Estino, I'll turn it over to you for your group to ask questions first.
Okay, thank you.
If that's okay. So we have, so we have tonight Superintendent Shannon, School Committee Chair Craig McClellan, and School Director of Finance and Facilities Sue Owen. So if you'd like to come up, that would be great. Mrs. Estino, your group got the presentation packet, correct?
We did, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna be screen sharing it now.
All right, yes. Okay, well, thank you all for having us. We are looking forward to sharing with you our preliminary budget proposals and thoughts. I, if you could just go to the next slide. So some of this is review, but I think it's important just to understand sort of where we've come from. One of the things that we really do when we look at creating our budget for the next year is thinking about what we are and who we are as a district, and where we're trying to go, because those become our priorities for building the future budget for the next year.
No, there's something wrong with my audio here. It's my speaker's not working. Check your connections. I don't know. I might, I might have to take a ride.
Okay. So on this slide, you'll see that we do have some budget priorities for this coming school year. They really do center around the components of our strategic plan. They are focused on teaching and learning, continuing to develop the social emotional wellness of our students, our resources and communication and engagement with families and the community. And so everything that we are proposing helps us meet those budget priorities. This year especially, we really spent some time looking at the different types of budgets that we could create. And so we looked at our budget calendar first, and we are, you can see, we're sort of in the middle of our budget process, which is our meeting here with you. We have added an extra meeting actually to our calendar. So at our next school committee meeting, we will have our budget hearing. We will also be having a conversation and discussion around proposed fees. And then there'll be an additional meeting on March 27, where the school committee will be voting on fees. That will allow us to then come back on our April 2nd meeting and have school committee actually vote for FY 26 budget. So we really looked at different types of budgets this year because of the financial situation we have found ourselves in this year. And I thought it was really important that as a district, we, we looked at all of these because a fully funded budget is all the things that we could use to improve and enhance and continue to run our district the way that we would like to for FY 26. Obviously, given our budget constraints this year, we are not coming to you asking for increases in our current program. But you'll see in this presentation that if we were to fully fund our program, what we would be looking for. There are also level funded or level service budgets. And so for a level funded budget, it's the same amount of money that we have currently this year, which, as you know, was not even enough to run our district for the FY 25 year. So a level funded budget for us really is a reduced budget, because there's no way that we could fund next year's on the same amount of money. And level service would be, we have the exact same level of service that we have this current school year, and nothing more and nothing less. We actually aren't proposing that either, because we know that given our financial constraints for this year going into next year, we needed to make some shifts. That's why the budget proposal that you're gonna see is actually a combination of increasing revenue streams to the district and proposing some reductions as well to try and meet our budget shortfall. So when we look at the school budget, there are several things that really contribute to what we need to think about. So we really need to look at contracted salaries. That is the majority of a school budget. It's all of our staffing. Special education costs, I'll talk a little bit more about in a little bit. That's a large portion of our budget, and that is the most volatile part of our budget. It is not something we can predict. Our special ed budget line items could be completely shifted with just one or two family move-ins over the summer. And that's not anything that we have a crystal ball to be able to see. We also look at facilities and maintenance. We look every year at our class sizes and our course offerings. We look at transportation, and again, we look at fees. This slide shows you a little bit about where all of our money goes. So you can see, as I said earlier, that salaries are the majority of our budget. We do have supplies and materials that we need. Those are our textbooks, our curriculum materials, paper, all of the things that go into what we need in a school in a given year. Utilities has been an interesting line item for us recently. Our schools are no different than our homes, where the cost of utilities is rising pretty quickly. And so it's sometimes hard to predict. We have tried to actually sort of guess at how much extra we will need going into next year. We'll see that we are increasing our amount that we are putting in our line item for utilities, because we know that those costs are going up. But just like in a home budget, when you increase the amount that you need for utilities, you have to reduce somewhere else. And so that's the exercise that we've been going through this year. So special education, I think this is an interesting piece to really talk a little bit about, because special education is something that we do at a variety of levels as a district, and it's something that we have to legally and morally provide for our students. And so we do a lot of special education services within the general ed classroom setting. We have supported classrooms, we have co-teaching, we have partial inclusion. But there does come a time when we can't actually educate some of our students, our Cohasset resident students in our district. And so we have to propose an out-of-district placement for those students. And those students are Cohasset students. We are legally required to provide that educational experience for them. And we are sort of at the mercy of the tuitions that those out-of-district schools set. There is an Operational Services Division, OSD, that helps monitor the prices for the out-of-district tuitions. But an example of where their monitoring doesn't help us is in FY 24, out-of-district tuition placement prices went up 14%. No schools were prepared to increase in their budget 14% for out-of-district placement. That costs a lot of money. It costs upwards of hundreds of thousands of dollars. In some districts, it was millions of dollars. And then in FY 25, they went up another 4%, and they're predicting to go up in FY 26, 3.67%. And as I said earlier, we can budget for the amount of students that we currently know are part of our district that require out-of-district services. And if a family or two moves in, and their students have an IEP with a placement that is out-of-district, then we then have to assume those costs as well. And that's not something that we can budget for. In addition, when our students go out of district, we also have to pay their transportation. And so those costs become a lot in our budget as well, because transportation increases for those transportation services are also somewhat unregulated and have been going up at high rates as well. Not quite as high as what we saw in FY 24 for the tuitions, but still going up higher each year, which makes it difficult. We also, just so that you can see, we have been building over the years internal programming. When we can build internal programming for our special ed students, we are able to keep more students in district. But because we're a small district, it's hard to build a program for one or two students. And every student, you know, the whole purpose behind special education is that it's an individualized education plan. So every child needs something different. And so sometimes we can build a program that meets the needs of multiple students. And sometimes we have students who, even if we build a program, can't be served in our district. So we are continuing with Michael Stapleton, who is our new Director of Student Services, to think about how we could start building some additional programming to bring some of our students back. But that's a lengthy process. It involves a lot of work with families, with students, and building a program that can actually meet the needs of those children. It also requires additional staffing. Now, having built programs in other districts with a special ed director, there, even though you're bringing in staffing, there is savings, because if you have a, you know, a cohort of four or five students who are going out, and it's $100,000 per student, if you build a program for those students and you have two staff members, you're still saving approximately $300,000. So there is a savings, but we have to really do a lot of work to think about what that programming could look like. We also look at facilities and maintenance. This is where the utilities come in. Our facilities department has been really supportive. They did a lot of work prior to my arrival to change out light bulbs and do all of the things to decrease our use. We do have a decreased use in our utilities, however, the costs have risen. So even though we're using less, it is costing us more money to use our utilities. And because of some shifts that have happened over the last couple of years, the schools have not typically had a line item for maintenance. But two years ago, there was a conversation between the schools and the facilities department to determine who really was doing what. And when that happened, there were some maintenance costs that had to come on to the school budget. And so this year, we're actually making sure that there's a maintenance line, so that we are actually budgeting for those costs. We also look at student population and class size. I think it's fairly well-known that our student population has been going down, and that's a trend across many communities, that the population size is just going down right now. And we are also looking at how do we continue to keep students in district. We do have a population of students who go to private schools. We have a few students who go to South Shore Voc Tech in a charter school. And so one of the things we'll be looking at as we continue to move forward is how do we enhance what Cohasset Public Schools offers, so that we can keep more students here in town. And though class, though our student population is going down right now, if you go to the next slide, you'll see that we use NASDAQ. They're a company that, um, New England. I actually can't remember what it stands for, all the rest of it, but they, um, they are the folks who accredit our schools, and they do enrollment projections, and they are projecting that our actual enrollment is gonna start going back up. You'll see that the low point actually is this year and going into 26, 27. And so, but by the time we're at 2033, 2034, that we're back up into almost 1450. So it's an interesting thing as you think about, you know, the enrollment trends and the ups and downs, and thinking about when you can make reductions and when you have to stay steady, because there is a piece where we don't want to cut programming and have other kids decide to go out of district, because we're not offering something. So it's, it's not as easy as the numbers went down, you reduce, because it actually reduces what we can offer for our students and makes us a less likely option for our community. And so this, you know, K through 5 is easy to talk about class size, because we say there are 125 students, there are six classrooms, you do the division, it's 21 students per classroom on average. We do believe that best practice for K through 2 is to keep class sizes 20 and under. Those are our youngest, our newest learners. It's where they're learning to read, it's where they're learning their foundational math skills, and so keeping those class sizes small is really important. As they get up into Deer Hill, class sizes are more aligned with about 20 to 24 at the highest is what we like to keep it at. And so you'll see that that's where our class sizes are. Middle school and high school becomes sort of a different beast altogether, because you can't necessarily just divide, because you have levels, you have course selection for students. So you know, in middle school, students are choosing, am I gonna take French, or am I gonna take Spanish? Am I gonna be in an advanced math class or a CP math class? And all of those decisions determine how many sections we offer of each course. And so you can't just divide and say there are 25 students per class. But we do try and every year, look at the number of students, the number of staff we have and class sizes. And for, at the high school, for instance, we just went through a whole review with Principal Scott, and we talked about, you know, if course enrollment is less than X, do we not offer that class? Do we merge some classes so that we have higher class sizes and that we're running the school a little bit more efficiently? So high school especially is a little hard, because there are so many electives and so many different pathways that students can take. But I think it's important to note that, and this is really just since COVID, that we've been able to really track. We do have some reductions that have been made since COVID. We also have some additional staffing that has happened. COVID was a really interesting time, and in my 25 years of working in schools, there are really two, two times where I can think of where the needs of students have dramatically shifted. The first was several years ago, when cell phones really came to be a thing, especially social media, and the the social emotional needs of students became much greater. And saw a very similar shift in student needs coming out of COVID. And if you look at our data and data sort of across the state and across the country, student anxiety, depression, stress levels are really high. And so there's a need for schools to be able to address those needs. And so we have, as a district, added counseling staff at all levels, through school adjustment counselors and counselors. And that is just specifically to meet the needs of our students in the social emotional realm. Additionally, coming out of COVID, we had to really think about how we brought our students' academic levels back up. We had students who were out of classes, out of school. Our youngest students weren't going to preschool in the same way, so they weren't coming in with the same foundation. So we did add reading and math specialists at the elementary school level and the middle school level. And as a result of that, we are one of the few districts across the state where our MCAS data is either back to pre-COVID levels or exceeding pre-COVID levels. And I do think that's a direct result of the staffing additions that have come into the district. That said, there are places where we have reduced staff as well, when possible, and shifted staff. So earlier, you saw the slide with the numbers for elementary school. When possible, if there's a bubble class, and we have an additional class that's, say, a third grade, and we need that bubble class to move to fourth grade, we do shift a teacher, rather than keeping class sizes extra small at one grade and then making them smaller. So we do really try and look each year at what the staffing is and how we can make some shifts. You'll see on there that at the elementary school, the bottom bullet is shifted 3.0 kindergarten teacher in ESP salaries from revolving to operating. That's when the district took on the kindergarten registration fees, and kindergarten became free to all incoming families. But that used to have those, half of the kindergarten staff used to be paid out of a revolving account, and then they came on to the operating budget. And in addition to staff that's paid through the operating budget, excuse me, we also have staff who are paid out of the grants in revolving budgets. You can see how those have shifted over the last three years. We actually, as a total, have fewer staff being paid out of both of those resources. Again, some of those shifts have happened because of the kindergarten staffing. And some of those have shifted, because we have lost some grant funding. We are not a district that gets a lot of grant funding. There's a lot of reasons for that. But for instance, this is the first year in a little while that we actually have not qualified for any Title I funding. And so that changes how you can do some staffing and what positions may have been paid out of some of those grant funds. You know, and we are, right now, they're estimating that we may get some Title I funding back next year, but that's hard to predict, because Title I funding is a federal grant. And so we don't really know where that's gonna fall, and so it's hard for us to count on that money at this point, though we would like to. And we also look at our course and program offerings. And there's a fine balance here. We want to make sure that we're providing a comprehensive curriculum for all of our students pre-K through 12. Part of what we do offer our students is what keeps so many of our students in district. We just went through a strategic survey process, because we just started our strategic planning process with a large, about 30 people. And out of that data, it is clear that our students come out of the Cohasset Public Schools really well-prepared. They're ready for whatever comes next. And I do attribute that to the programming that we offer. I actually was talking with a professor from BU earlier in the week, who shared with me. I asked what he taught. He talked about the fact that he teaches in the finance department. He said what's amazing to him is how many students he has to teach how to write. And then he looked at me, he goes, but not the Cohasset students. Cohasset students come incoming prepared. So when we look at the programming that we offer, we want to make sure we're providing this robust and rigorous program offering, because that is what allows our students to be so successful when they leave our district. We also look at transportation. We have to provide transportation for some of our students, all of our students pre-K or K through 5, K through 6, actually, and any other student who lives outside of two miles from their school. And so right now, we have eight bus routes and eight leased buses with one electric bus. All of that costs money, and our bus routes are tight. We actually have requested an additional bus through Capital, because three of our buses are literally at their max capacity and have routes that exceed 40 minutes. And so we really need a ninth route to be able to support our students who are riding the bus. We also have 10 bus drivers right now. If we add, we have the additional bus drivers, because last year, there were bus driver shortages, and as a result, there was a lot of having to shift to double up routes and to make phone calls on a regular basis to families to let them know that their bus stop was gonna be early or late. If we add our additional route for next year, we will only have one bus driver who is there for sub purposes. We also have been talking a lot about the bus parking lease and shifting that, so that our buses can come back onto school property would save us about $48,000 a year. There are a couple of things that we're trying to work out there. One of those is the electric bus charger. And the other is, we really want to find a place where our buses could be during the school day, because we also want to capitalize on the amount of parking that our students can have during the day, because one of the fees that we're looking at adding is a student parking fee. So if our buses are in the school lot, from the time the school transportation day ends till the morning when it heads out, then that's great. And then if they, if we could find another place for them to be during the school hours, then students can use that parking area, and then it becomes bus parking again in the evening. And so we are looking at several fees. Some of them are increases, some of them are additions. And so school committee will be talking about athletic fees, transportation fees, building rentals, student parking, activity fees, and full-day kindergarten fees. And so, you know, this is just a slide that captures this year. And I think everybody is aware that we are running at a shortfall this year, and I'm really grateful for all of the partnership that has been offered to us this year from Chris and Ellen. As we continue to talk about this, it was something that was discovered very early on and shared, and we are continuing to monitor it. We froze the budget really early in an attempt to manage it. And we are still hoping that as we get closer and closer to June, that that number is gonna actually start coming down. And so we're trying to keep on top of that. And so as we think about, you know, going back to the different types of budgets that we did look at, if we were to, you know, if you said to us, we're gonna give you an extra $10 million, I know that's not gonna happen, but if you did, we would hope to add a grade four teacher, an adjustment counselor to the elementary school, so that there was one at each of the elementary schools, two assistant principals, some additional electives at the high school, and some additional professional development. We are not gonna be doing any of those things, except for the grade four teacher. That is a position that we do need to add. Otherwise, our grade four class sizes will be 25 and over and higher. Because we can't just shift a teacher, it, it's got, because otherwise those class sizes become high. So we're not actually looking for additional funding for that teacher. We're looking to reimagine some positions that already exist. And again, level service budget, if And again, level service budget, if we were to have the exact same services that we have this year. With the one addition of that grade four teacher, we would need at least a six point eight percent increase from the town. Again, we um, know that's not possible and so we're making that accommodation. But I think it's important that people understand and not you, but everybody who's watching in the in the community. What what the costs are to to run the district. Um, and one thing that's noted there that I haven't talked about is that. Um, the prices that you see on the screen don't include any negotiated costs of living increases. Because we are current for our staffing, because we're still in negotiations with our teachers. Um, and so we're still working through that process and once we know we'll be able to to have more firm numbers to work with. And we expect to have that information soon. Um, so what are we looking at for FY twenty-six? So if we. Assumed a four percent increase, we know it may be a little less than that. Um. The total FY twenty-six increase over the FY twenty-five budgeted allocation. We really would be looking at an increase of nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. For a total of twenty-four million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. But we know that we actually need to run our district for next year. Twenty-five million, five hundred and thirty-five dol- thousand and six hundred and eighty dollars, which leaves us. With no negotiated increase at a deficit of about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So when we take into an estimated negotiated salary increase, we did start to build our budget. With um, trying to close about a, at least a one point two million dollar shortfall. And so we have identified, you can go to the next slide, thanks. We have identified, um, as I said, some potential revenue increases through fees. But we have also identified. Almost six hundred thousand dollars in reductions through either staff or supplies or other. Non-staffing. Opportunities. Um, and so we do think through those two. Resource or streams, we can get to the one point two million dollars. Um, and as we talk about fees, we know that. So if the school committee decides not to increase the athletic fee, we know that that means we have to make another reduction somewhere else. And so we've been working with. The principals and central office to identify what those are. We are, you know, what's here is currently sort of our tier one reductions. They're not outlined um, by position yet. Because though some of those people have been informed, we're we're really trying to um. Let people know when their position is potentially being cut, but also not. We're trying to manage sort of the emotion of staff as well. Um, because we won't want to make um, unnecessary cuts if we don't have to. We are focusing on non-student facing reductions first. Trying not to make reductions in core classes. Um, and we think that with the five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That we are reducing as many of the non-student facing positions as we can. So that's our general overview for our approach to the FY twenty-six budget. Open to any questions.
Great, um, thank, thank you very much. Um, so Mrs. Estino, um, wanna take your group through?
Sure. I just have one quick question. So if I could ask that, first of all, thank you very much. This was. A great improvement in the presentation is looking a little bit more like what I'm used to. So I appreciate that. But I did note that unless I missed it, there's no conversation here. In your presentation about pre-K.
So pre-K is not an area that we're looking at cutting or adding. Um, we actually. Um, some of pre-K is not. Tuition based because those are students who are qualifying through early intervention for IEP services. And so we provide.
Right.
Um, pre-K for those students. And we do have our students who are coming in as community peers and they do pay um, to attend. But we are not looking at those fees at this time.
Okay, is there ju- and I understand all of what you just said, but is there just one classroom? Or is it a morning and afternoon? How does it work now?
Yep, so we have two, two classrooms and morning and afternoon in both at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from advisory? Mike Barclay?
Hi, um, you know, thank you Superintendent Shannon. This is a great presentation. I just had a quick question on the um. For fiscal twenty-five with the, how the circuit breaker works on for special ed. Because I know you had the s- the the one time special ed cost. But I'm looking at the the circuit breaker. Did that offset the the entire, the rest of the budget? If I remember correctly, there's a lag to how that circuit breaker works. Um, but if you could maybe just remind us how that mechanism works, i- it'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, um, do you wanna talk about that a little bit and then I can fill in if.
So typically there is a lag, we're usually pulled back a year um, with circuit breaker. But because of how the FY twenty-four budget ended, we utilized. The previous year's circuit breaker and probably seventy-five percent of the current incoming circuit breaker. So um. It left us short with circuit breaker. So this year, we have about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars left from last year. And then whatever we get this year, we'll have to cover this year. So we don't have a year lapsed at this moment. The plan is to hopefully build that back up.
Okay, and and is there a a kind of a formula for for how that would be calculated? Or does that, is that move around as well year to year?
The circuit breaker?
Yeah.
So the circuit break is based on um, uh, special to out, uh, special tuition that's that's outsourced. Um, and there's a foundation amount of about fifty thousand dollars that comes off each tuition, um, annual tuition payment. And whatever is remaining, the state will refund us seventy-five percent.
Okay, great, okay, thank you.
And the state also has started to um. Reimburse for some transportation, but they are not reimbursing currently at the level that they said they would. So um, there's a push through the superintendent's association to have. The governor use some of her surplus money to actually fully fund the transportation reimbursement for circuit breaker.
Okay, and and I guess I just have to ask too, is any of that federal dependent? I mean, does that have to trickle down from the federal budget through the state?
No, our circuit breaker is is just through the state.
Okay, great, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Fran? I can't hear you. Fran's having audio problems.
How's that?
They, okay, that's good.
Yeah, the question I have is uh, on the grant employees. If we lose the grant money, what happens to the. Employees that are being funded by the grant money?
We either have to roll them into um, the the operating budget or we would have to um. Make some type of reduction. In order to either fund them or let them go.
Yeah, so some of our grants, we feel comfortable because they're state grants. Um, and we're not at a place yet where we're starting to plan for. If the federal funding doesn't come in, because we get so little from the federal funds at this point.
All right, I I it it, I had some thoughts here. The last time we spoke with you years ago that. Some of these grant employees all of a sudden becoming full-time employees and it seemed to be kind of a. Um, a sort of a backdoor way of of increasing the uh, the staff there, but apparently you've got plans for that, so I'll let that go. Um, busing, how, how heavily patronizes the busing? I go by the schools at uh, at at the closing time and I see huge lines of cars waiting to pick up their students. And I'm just wondering, do we have a lot of empty buses or are they full?
No, they're full. If you look at, and and I don't have it part of this presentation and. But if you look at our elementary runs specifically, they're really full. We have three bus runs that are actually at capacity. Um, it to the point where the, it's tough for the kids to fit on those buses. And so that's why we're actually asking for a. Run, um, an additional bus through capital because we really do need to address our bus size, our bus enrollment. And our bus enrollments at the elementary level have actually gone up um, by about fifty students this year. At the secondary level, it does go down a little bit because those students are riding with their older siblings and for a variety of reasons. But our elementary students, K through six, they are riding the bus.
But there was some comments that the that people were were commenting that buses looked like they were probably empty, but you really can't see. But good, that's the question I want, the answer I wanna, thank you very much.
Yep.
Diane?
Hi, thanks for this um. Great update. I was a few minutes late, so if you addressed this already, I apologize. But I'm just wondering what the status of the union contracts are and whether that's been taken into consideration in terms of your. Um, budget for FY twenty-six, any negotiated raises?
Yep, so we did um, an estimated increase in there, which we, you obviously don't know for sure. But we feel very confident that we will have um, actual numbers very soon. Um, and so that will help us really solidify what our budget shortfall is that we need to address.
So FY twenty-five, which we're currently in, is the end of a three-year contract. And you're in the process of negotiating for the next three years, is that?
Yes, there's there. I don't even know, can I?
Yep. Something like that?
Yes, something like that.
That's fair enough, great, thank you.
I might add, it's it's all five of our bargaining units are out this year.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
And I do have one more question about the buses.
Yep.
Um. Sorry, but what is the status on the electric bus? And I I, you and I had a conversation about it early on when you first came. So I understand the challenges, but I hope we're not paying for that when it's not feasible.
We actually haven't, we I, we appreciate the fact that capital has put aside the money for each year of the lease so far. But they have not actually come looking for any of the money. Um, and we are still struggling to get all of the pieces functional. And actually got an email today where they are looking to have a conversation about the future of the electric bus.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
How many more questions from advisory?
Um, we, we voted to uh, the kindergarten for for funding the kindergarten through the budget. Um, did the state not really kind of put up to the arrangement? What happened with the kindergarten portion of of how we got to where we got to?
So in the spring, um. Twenty twenty-four, four maybe? Um, the the chapter seventy formula, um, when we spoke to the state, they they said that if we. Became free, it would double our kindergarten numbers, which would give us an additional five hundred and something thousand in chapter seventy funding. Um, and our portion would be a little over three. Roll forward a year and that formula changed. Um, and that wasn't the case and we didn't get five hundred and something thousand. I think we got forty thousand. Um, so we had to um, run with a shortfall because it wasn't, it wasn't funded. And we didn't wanna midstream reach out to parents and say, now you have to pay. So we we tried to absorb it within our budget and it just didn't work.
And and roughly, how many communities in the Commonwealth pay for kindergarten?
Just did a survey and I wanna say there's probably ten. That are on the list, ten to twelve that are on the list that are still charging. I think Duxbury might be one of them.
There, it depends on if their override vote passes or not. If it passes, they will not be charging for kindergarten. If it does not pass, then they will be charging for kindergarten. But it's a small number. Anything else from advisory?
I don't have anything, anyone? No, thank you. Oh, Fred does, he has his hand up.
Yeah, yeah, uh, one more question on the, what, I I probably, I was having difficulty with the computer here in the beginning. So I missed some of your presentation, which looked like it was pretty nicely done. Um, what percentage of our budget is represented by the uh, outer district special education?
Yeah, well, you don't have it there, only because.
Even a percentage is not, they're not the actual numbers.
I don't think we have it down into a percentage.
So, yeah.
Our out of different, our out of district tuitions currently are about two point three million dollars.
Okay, all right.
In the presentation, it's it's one point one four two million sped tuitions and contracted services.
Thank you.
So that's one, one, four, two, three, one, six, divided by nine.
I think I did hear you say that you're going, attempting to bring some of those students back into the, to the school system.
About like five percent, does that sound right?
Five percent.
One million on twenty-four point three million.
Yeah. Yeah, and we are looking to build more programming. That's gonna take time though. But yes, we are looking at it.
All right, thank you.
Yep, great, um, all right, we'll start with Mr. Farav.
Hey, thank you for your presentation. Um, as a, as somebody who graduated from Cohasset High School, mother graduated from Cohasset High School. All three of my kids attended the Cohasset School System. So the school system is more than just a place of bricks and mortar like this for so many people. Who have gone through there, you know, in the community. Um, but I guess that some of the questions that dived into the budget are, um, if you go back. Look, and again, because our superintendent is brand new, she just started within the last year. With the previous superintendent, um, what, were there any raises given before he left? Uh, to administration or anybody before he left?
I don't, I don't.
Yes.
I mean, if there were, if there were contracts, contracts that had expired, yes. Um, but there was no out of cycle raises given.
Okay, and was there any hire, what have you done in the last two years?
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, um, there was a position that was created in central office, the director of data evaluation and instruction. Um, was created two years, it's been in existence for two years. Um, and I, he's well aware, this, that's one of our um. On the list for reductions.
Okay, thanks. There was also food services director, but it replaced prior food services director, so it wasn't an addition. But we did hire, it's an administrative position.
And that's, in Mr. Roberts' position, um. There was a director of technology and data and technology. Um, that we eliminated that position, which is how we funded um. Mr. Roberts' position.
However, in full transparency, I believe, uh, as Mr. Collins raised a few moments ago, that might have been one of those. Um, grant funded positions. Um, if I'm remembering correctly. Uh, obviously, uh, director of instructional technology was fitting at the time. We didn't know where we were going. We're in the middle of pandemic. Um, and we thought it was a wise expenditure of grant resources. So I don't know, unlike the food services director I just mentioned, I don't wanna give the. Impression that that was a true swap. I feel like that may have been one of those situations that Mr. Collins was alluding to. Um, that that is certainly one of the pitfalls, I think, that has led us to the deficit, but one of many factors and a slight one at that.
Okay, thank you for for those. Um, and then regarding the um, the bus, the bus lease, because that's probably one of the most controversial. The one that, that I hear about the community the most out of, out of all the expectations. So is is that going to be ended uh, as a part of this budget? I just wanna highlight that for people if it is.
The bus parking lease?
Where the bus parks, yes.
Um, we're working on that. At, our goal is to end that. Um, but we do need to figure out where the buses could be during the day.
Okay, so Mr. Farav, that is something that. The district will will likely need community assistance with. I mean, the problem is, the reason why we're paying fifty thousand dollars to a third party to park our buses, because this town doesn't have anywhere to park its school buses. So it's something that I think is a, is a, it should be a townwide concern. I mean, that was just a solution, certainly a Band-Aid. It's something that pains me that we do. I can't stand that we do that. We're thankful for the third party to allow us to do that, because I don't know what we would do otherwise. But still, fifty thousand dollars is a significant amount of money. And um, you know, I I think that um. Someone had asked uh, in in preparation for this meeting about that very issue. And I said, open to any and all suggestions. We're trying to, our superintendent's crafted a solution where maybe we can somehow shuttle the buses. maybe we can somehow shuttle the buses to and fro during the school days, so that we're still maintaining them on our property and, and then uh, obviating the need to, to lease the, the property from the third party. But even that would take a lot of doing, because we have to find a place to put the buses during the day. And then there has to be a place for the drivers to park their cars and a way for them to get back to the parking lot that the buses originated from. So it's a, it's a, um, that is a, a bit challenging circumstance.
So more to be determined, but hopefully we come to a successful resolution. Um, with, uh, going into all of the, uh, in the last, you know, two years, or at least from going into this budget. It looks like all the cost centers, you know, were kind of, you know, going, going up and getting out of you know, getting out of where they could be funded. Um, and so dur, you know, during that time period, I, I don't, I didn't watch every school committee meeting, but I mean, was, was that brought to your attention that's, that all the different cost centers were kind of going, saying, no, here, you know, on the select board, we get like, you know, at mi, at minimum quarterly reports. Um, and if something is running hot and running over budget or for, uh, stuff like, for instance, health insurance. It was brought to our attention a couple of months ago that, um, health insurance is on the horizon, it's going to go up to a percent plus or even more. Um, so some of these things were, you know, brought to your attention at the time, but, but as they came, or I realize some, you don't find out till after the fact.
I feel like it came to a head all at once.
Yeah.
And I think it was a, that there are, it was a perfect storm of a number of contributing factors, some more um, perhaps impactful than others. Uh, but you had, uh, inflation, um, unanticipated, uh, costs of out-of-district placement. And, um, and, um, one other factor, um, that I'm, I'm
I think.
Failing to remember, the kindergarten issue. Um, these things sort of combined and, and I think kind of came to head a, at once. I mean, I remember this hitting us sort of like a brick wall. Um, and we immediately made it known, um, the circumstances im- immediately, uh, froze spending. Um, because it's a significant problem. I will say this, um, first and foremost, you know, because I want to ensure that everyone understands, as you meant, noted at the beginning of your question, our superintendent is brand new. So obviously, the superintendent, uh, who is doing an excellent job in her, uh, initial year, uh, had nothing to do with that. The school committee, one of its fundamental, uh, duties is the oversight of the school budget. So, uh, as such, you know, we need to take and accept responsibility for the circumstances. There are multiple, and by multiple, I mean most, school, public school districts throughout the, the Commonwealth right now that are encountering the same exact issues. There are some districts that are not, and they are very unique in that they either in-house a lot of the um, which would otherwise be out of district placements, and also have enormous commercial bases. An example of a community like this would be Dedham. Um, I've met with Dedham School Committee member and, uh, and they're in pretty good financial shape because of those unique circumstances. Cohasset is obviously very different, uh, uh, differently postured than Dedham. So, um, we do accept responsibility for it. And, uh, we, we, we are, obviously, you heard this presentation and we're, we're taking steps to, to rectify this as best we can. We are thankful for the partnership of the select board and the capital budget and, and, and town, town hall and trying to fashion solutions to this. But, you know, the community needs to understand that it elected a school committee and, and, you know, while we do our best to monitor these situations, this did happen and, you know, the buck needs to stop somewhere. So we accept responsibility and we're doing our best to move on. Um, and, uh, and perhaps we can put some, some better, uh, safeguards in place to sort of raise some red flags earlier. I don't know, in this situation, it would have mattered. I think we would have had a shortfall regardless of when we found out about it. Maybe that amount would have been different. It would have been significant, uh, nevertheless, so. Would add that.
And if I could just add to that, um, because I think that you know, Cohasset is fortunate in that yes, we could have done some things coming into this year differently. But it's really this year that the perfect storm of what's happening in the financial sort of landscape of schools is hitting us just this year. Um, many other school districts hit that fiscal cliff going into this coming year, more so than even Cohasset did. Um, it's why there's such a push of all of the professional agencies are coming together to start to make some put pressure on the senators and the representatives to start looking at the funding formula for schools. Because the funding formula does not keep up with the inflation and the cost of schools. It's an expensive prospect to run a public school district. And in a town like Cohasset, where we don't have the commercial tax base, it really falls on, on the people. Right? And so you can only ask the community to do so much. And otherwise, the state needs to change how it's funded. There, they just, you know, we're going into year five of the Student Opportunity Act. If you listen to the governor's budget, they're funding that more and more. It will be fully funded in year six of six. Only twenty seven schools out of three hundred and fifty-one districts actually receive money from the Student Opportunity Act. And if you look at her budget for the Student Opportunity Act, it's in the millions and millions of dollars. So the schools like Cohasset that don't actually benefit from the different funding formulas and the different grants that the, that the state and the Department of Ed put forward, that's an issue. Because we are equally in need and we can't keep going back to our people. We've got to fix some of the systemic issues. Otherwise, we're going to continue to be in this situation. So while some of that could have been avoided, a lot of it is also situational.
Thank you. Um, and I would say that we we talked about here at the select board during our comment periods about the success of the Coasen Schools and how it's been rated in the top twenty school, even almost a top ten school. Uh, with a couple of points better on math, it would have been, it would have been in both categories. We want to make sure that that success not only is there in the past, but is in the present and in the future. Uh, so that the school's going to be successful going forward. So I'll leave my questions there, but, but thank you so much for, and, and I would say that last thing is that, um, part of your uh, solution in it, uh, I would say the, in, the looking at protecting, uh, the, the student oriented and the protecting the classroom uh, is something that really should be looked at as, as you were doing. I think that's, that's the most important thing is the teachers in the classroom, uh, with the kids to make sure that stays at the class size as much as possible, um, and to look at other areas if, if it has to be, um, you know, to, in reduction of FTEs or otherwise. So, thank you, you know. So I'm sure everyone else has questions.
Uh, Mr. Creighton?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Um, by the way, we are, thank you Craig for stepping up and taking responsibility. That's important. It's also important to recognize that you walked into this, um, maybe you should have done your research earlier and figured out what you're walking into, um, but we do have a problem. Um, and waiting for the state to bail out a community like Cohasset, politically, it's just not going to happen. Um, so that's what it is, so we have to do this. I think is, um, for a North Star guidepost, the most important thing is our teachers, the quality of our teachers. A quality teacher will mitigate a lot of the needs for other things. So I, I think as we look what we have to do, we have to make sure that we preserve the quality of our teachers. Because a good teacher makes all the difference. And the other thing I think we should recognize, that the quality of the parents and the dedication of the parents makes your job running the schools a lot better. You have parents who respond. And even though we have our share of broken families and abuse and drug abuse and all those kinds of things. Um, we have a, we have a healthy community through Safe Harbor and, and, and other programs that's addressing that. So we start with a higher caliber of students. So, I mean, that's the good news. The bad news is we are going to have to do this. And, you know, as professionals, we are looking for our school professionals under the guidance of our elected representatives to understand that all these types of issues you can plan ahead and you have to figure out worst-case scenario. I mean, because private industry has to do that. And there are some things that, that you can learn by looking how they do, do it and avoid this coming down. Uh, this kind of disaster or hopefully won't be a disaster. So anyway, um, I did want to congratulate you for taking responsibility. Make sure that we recognize the reality and also recognize the other school committees and members who've, uh, you know, struggled with this and had to deal with this. Thank you for your good work for the town. But let's always remember, it's, it's teachers who provide them. And if cuts need to be made, um, I went to schools, yeah, I'm an old, whatever. You know, we would have like thirty, forty kids. Um, and we kind of, well, some notable exceptions, came out okay. So, but let's remember the teachers. And again, thank you very much and thank you for all the parents who have stepped in to assist through the P S O to, and the Cohasset Educational Foundation that have made your job a lot easier. Enough said, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grady?
Again, congratulations and welcome to the mess. But, uh, just a couple of questions. Pre, pre-COVID and now post-COVID. In between that, what was our staffing level pre and what's our staffing level post? I mean, how did we go? How many people did we hire? You said something interesting about, you know, we hire some COVID, uh, I'm calling COVID hires for lack of a better analogy. That's no slur on them. But are they still employed?
So I think some of them are, um, and Sue can speak to it a little bit better, but I do think.
But I'd like to. The immediate director superintendent, I apologize, just so, just so you don't have to reinvent the wheel. How many before and how many after and during? That's, that's really what's, I'm really keyed in on is, you know, because we're through COVID, thank God. So what are they doing today that we have? You know, and then I'm just trying to look at staffing levels, that's why.
I don't, I don't honestly have an exact number. I can get you, I can certainly get you a number. Um, we did add some reading and math specialists, um, and some social workers. And some of them remain and some of them don't. Um, we added a few custodial staff and a few saw, um, in, in our plan moving forward and some of our reductions, um, we've looked at, we've looked at the custodial staff.
Mm-hmm.
But not the teachers? We're looking at custodial staff in a full building or custodial staff that we hired in primarily empty buildings?
Mr. Grady, can I just, just to? I'm just trying to, I, because I want to be able to get this information to you. Because I think it's only so helpful for hypothesizing about, you know, trying to guess at the answers. I want to get you the answer. Are you, are you trying to, um, are you trying to identify what positions we hired that may not be providing any value at this point? Because they were, they were, they were hired with the, in express intention of specifically addressing some pandemic-related need?
Well, I think everybody has value, uh, but, you know, it's at a point in time coming out of COVID that value may be reduced.
Okay, so.
So have they been moved? Have they been shuffled around again? And when you mentioned the, uh, custodial staff and all, so if you saw the help they can get, working with them now. But, you know, are we top heavy?
Sure, I, I just wanted to make, understand what you were driving at, so we can, we can get you the information. I think it's only going to be so, I, I don't want to sit here and sort of guess the answer to the question. It's, it's readily accessible and we can get that to you. I think it would be more helpful for you to see that than us sitting here guessing.
Okay. And this may be the elephant in the room or tab who's stuck, and I apologize for putting it out there. But have we ever given any thought to regionalization? I, I look at Dover Sherwin, I mean, we have, say, for instance, Hall um, has maybe forty students, they're graduating class. Have we given any thought to regionalization where, you know, if it wasn't Hall's a situated or something along those lines? Have we even looked at it, you know, as, as a possibility, not a probability, but as, as a possibility?
Yeah, I've been on the committee for six years and at least once a year, it's raised in some way.
Okay.
Um, I, I personally don't believe that the community would, would have an appetite for that. I think financially it makes a lot of sense. Um, but there's been no, I mean, I don't remember, I mean, Mrs. Marr was the chairperson of the school committee when I first started. I don't remember any, I, I don't remember any like robust conversation about it.
No.
Serious discussion where we're seriously contemplating that as, as a solution to any sort of problem.
Well, the reason I'm asking is I know, you know, we're looking at different school facilities, being new school, revamping the schools and everything like that. And we've got the shortfall here. I mean, it might be an interesting time to put out some feelers to see what people, see what the appetite of the town is, because as you said yourself, superintendent, it's going to come back to the town. You know, it's funding from the federal, uh, feds and the state reduces over time. Um, and you may have some other towns for an app with an appetite for it. I just, uh, it might just be worthwhile to me, you know, sticking the toe in the water, doing a fitness test. And when people see that we have a shortfall, they may be more inclined for something like that. Again, I didn't need to throw it out there, but it's just something worth investigating. And that might be a road to a new school, for instance. I was picking that spot, um. Again, I know, and this is, they did it years ago, but Dover Sherwin was very successful. Their town's similar to Cohasset and, uh, they're a geographic, but they're demographics and. I think that would be a real worthwhile endeavor, just to take a look at that and to see what the appetite in the town for us. Just to, um, just to putting my.
Something we can explore.
That it?
I think that's it. Thank you so much. It was a great presentation.
Mr. Plax?
So Superintendent Shannon, welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, I also want to acknowledge, as you were walking through the presentation, I think most of us would have been tempted to point out that you're new, you didn't create this problem, you're stepping into it, you didn't do that once. And I want to thank you for that. You're taking the ownership of the issue. And that's exactly what we need to do. We all own it at this point. So we all need to collectively find a solution. So you're taking the leadership role in that, and I just want to say thank you. Uh, question about the circuit breaker funding. I think I heard you say that seventy-five percent is funded?
Yes.
Uh, and, and is there any limitation to that? Or is that something that, God forbid, that gets triggered every year, then that's seventy-five percent funded by the state every year?
It's, it's seventy-five percent. It's been seventy-five percent consistently for quite a few years now.
But the limit, there are some limitations in the fact that the foundation the foundation number of the tuition has to meet a certain level to be eligible to, to get the, the money above that foundation level. The state has increased that founding or decreased that foundation level.
Increased.
Increased that foundation level. Um, and so not every out-of-district tuition results in circuit breaker money in the way that we would like.
So as the foundation level increases, the circuit breaker becomes harder to trip?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you. Um, next question, I, I think I heard you mentioned that the shortfall is driven fifty percent by uh, special education out-of-district placements and fifty percent by the kindergarten formula?
No, I did not get percentages. I named them as impactful factors in the overall perfect storm that led us to this financial situation.
A- as we get closer and closer to town meeting, uh, the more we can articulate, here the drivers. Here's how the math works out, not tying out to the penny, but just making sure to leave something can. It's going to be a question that everyone has. So to make sure we get to the point where now we're talking about the solution. The more we can nail that down, the better. And I think my last comment is it, it, it ain't going to be cheap. So we appreciate what you're doing. You have my support to do it right and not on the cheap.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess that's me. So, um, I don't have a lot of questions for this particular budget. I was very encouraged by some of the programming and, and when we get through all of this and, and as you begin to formulate your strategic plan after you've had all these stakeholder meetings um, to, to look at what the future could be, because we all kind of scratch our head like, we'll get through this year, but what's going to happen in the next five years? To me is much more important than how we Band-Aid and fix this right now in, in many respects. Um, so the, um, one of the major things that I was thinking about was the, your comment, Superintendent Shannon, on the, um, working co, bringing special education students back into district and creating cohorts that are large enough to support them. And to Mr. Grady's point about regionalization, perhaps, you know, we don't regionalize our district, but there are services. We talk about it. I, I opine on it on my board a lot about we can't do everything on our own and we're not going to be able to in the future. So if it's as simple as, as cooperative purchasing, I mean, you co-op with other towns for sports programs. You know, is there economies in purchasing, is there economies in providing services in adjacent townships that, you know, does? Is there economies in providing services in adjacent townships that, you know, doesn't put a burden on transportation or on families? And I think that would be, um, a, a great way to, to look at future cost reduction in out of district tuitions. We do what?
We do that. Some combined buying. I will tell you this, roads and sidewalks.
Roads and sidewalks, yeah.
Do buy, you know, uh, Brian Joyce's team, they purchased, purchased our. Cement products and everything, but they co-buy with a number of the different towns and then they divvy up the time. Uh, that, you know, and allocate the time to, for say Elm Street or something like that. And it works really well. Uh, he said it lowers the costs and you get in early, you do your bid structures. Again, I'm not diving into your waters. So I don't, I'm just saying that, but it is a viable that, um. Our chair just brought up, um, is maybe combining products and that's where I was bouncing with the real reason.
And I actually have had a very, um, dip your toe in the water initial conversation with another superintendent. About, um, potentially doing some region specialized programming.
Okay, great. Um, the, the transportation it to eight bus routes to nine bus routes and, and. And the corollary effects it has had on the athletic transportation after school requirements. Um, and I understand, you know, there's a, a capital budget request for not only an additional bus. Because the town-owned Bluebird Bus is on its last legs, but also for athletic vans. Um, I'm wondering, um. Mr. McClellan, I remember when we did the, the start school later initiative. And all of the studies and data supported the Cohasset Middle High School starting later, ending later. And that flip-flopped with our dairy, our elementary parents, which created quite. A, a bubble of concern in the community. So. Osgood and Deer Hill start later after a Cohasset Middle High School and therefore their pickup and drop off is later. But prior, prior to that flip, athletics was like, we can accommodate this. But now we have buses after the middle high school route in the afternoon that is impacting athletics, correct? So, um, I'm not advocating shifting times again, because it's only been a few short years since we did that. But I'm wondering if in addition to, um. Athletic vans or mini buses, would a. Corey, forgive me, a tenth leased bus? Be more economical or be better utilized than two mini buses? I'm, I'm just saying, it's probably about the same amount of lease money, um, the bigger capacity, because he's very scared of his hand.
We, we have that company.
Way too deep in the dive on this.
Okay.
And we're begging for us underwater right now, so.
Okay. Well, you're, you're getting there, but I'm, I'm just thinking, because it all, it all reverts back to the start school time, the start, I can't say it. School start time, thank you. And what happened after? You know, we agreed on the middle high school and, and then we had to then position Deer Hill and Osgood afterward. So, um. I think that's interesting. We also did at one point have a, a student parking fee, uh, for the front student parking lot. And we abandoned it and perhaps the, the rules have changed. We had to abandon it because the money that was collected in the parking fee could only be used for that intent. Is that still correct with the revolving fund? So if you parked the buses there, maybe you could use the fee on the buses. Um, but we could only stripe and, and block top that so much. And that was actually on the town's dime. So we actually ended up, Mrs. Estino can confirm this. We ended up dropping that fee because there was no utilization, no way to utilize that, that money. Is. Am I remembering correctly?
You are. You definitely are.
So without deep diving.
Yeah.
There are a cost with managing anything. Administrative costs, all those.
Okay.
As long as you do it in a fair enough way, that, that, then there are other costs besides the current cost of parking. Administrative oversight, whether responsible. So there's, there's ways of supporting things in a legitimate way.
Okay.
More than just things you see.
Okay. Well, I would just throw caution to the wind that, that you, you do that. Um, and, um. Let me see, Mr. Senior, what is, what is the projected FY twenty-six number from the town? I'm trying to get a handle if the one point two million is over that number or.
Basically, the super. Pretty much what we've talked, what we've talked about, so.
Nine hundred and something.
Talking about town or district?
The number from, from the, the town. So it's the two and a half percent budget plus the sixty-one percent of revenue to what that number, I, I brought the wrong binder.
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the, basically, it's right around the point of forty, sixty-five.
Yeah, okay. Less than what it's actually going to cost us. So let me guess.
Okay, okay. Um. Well, listen, that question, um. Okay. So, so tho- those are my, my general questions. You know, I do have notes, like, when are we going to get circuit breaker back? Into the normal cadence of, you know, um, spending it a year ahead of time. Which I think, I think will be important as a, um. As a goal to, to do. Um, and just so the audience understands with special education, we're obligated to, um, provide services to, um. Cohasset residents who need services up to the age of twenty-two. So it's not like at the age of eighteen, you know, they move on to their own thing. It's up till the age of twenty-two. So, and then I, I have more comments on your fees, but I'll discuss it with Mr. McClellan. I don't need to bore the group with it.
Just one question.
Yes, Mr. Grady?
So, Craig, this may be more for you, because you're new. And you're facing, and again, I echo my colleague by saying, you know, standing up and doing it, and you too, Craig. So if we're able to find a way or a path forward through this, have you guys come up with any plans, you know? Post-budget to see that these things don't happen again, now that we live within our budget, you know, again, it always changes. But are we coming up with any plans to see that this doesn't happen again? And thank you for taking ownership. And I know it's not just you. All right. So it's all of us.
Sure. Um, although I will say as the senior member currently in the committee, I think I am personally posture to best take responsibility for it. As I was, you know, I, I have the most, it's a learning process. It's a volunteer position and the more years you're on it, the better your understanding gets. So. I will say that. I don't want to throw my fellow committee members under the bus, especially people who just joined. Uh, so, um. To answer your question.
Let's break and take advantage of town services.
Sure, sure, sure. Um, to, to, to answer your question, I, I alluded to this when I was responding to Mr. Frog's question. It, we, we don't, so the, the answer, the, the short answer to your question is no, we don't have any definitive plan yet, but. You know, what, what doesn't kill you makes you stronger. So. I think that we'll be much more sensitive to the omnipresent prospect that. Out of district costs can fly out of control very quickly, that inflation can adversely impact us in a, in a significant fashion. That doing something like free kindergarten tuition may be. An extraordinarily difficult thing for a small district like Cohasset to afford, even though perhaps from a pedagogical or, or just fundamental. You know, principle perspective, it's, it's the right thing to do. Um, so I, I think it's just going to. I think the, the, the overall situation has educated a bit, us a bit more on, on potential threats. The specific systems that we, or, or, uh, systems or processes that we put in place in order to identify these. Threats earlier on and to avoid them. I think we have, we have yet to define those systems, but, um, we're certainly going to. But again, I, I think, I think, you know, that the one silver lining here is, is that. It's going to cause us to, to watch these things much more carefully, because I don't think that we really considered, like, I mean, the fourteen percent. Um, increase is just something that, I mean, I don't think that many people would have foreseen that, but we now know that it's entirely possible. And, uh, we may need to budget in a much more conservative fashion. One other can, for example, Mr. Grady. One other contributing factor to this was, I, I think, um, and this is going to relate to the positive note that I'll leave us with in a moment, uh, once everyone's done with their questions, but. Our desire to continue the current programming at the schools, I think, left us reticent to cut costs. When perhaps we maybe should have taken a more conservative approach, uh, coming into this year. And so I, I, I think this process will perhaps cause us to err on the other side of that in the future. Um, that said, and this is the positive note I want to leave us on, because this is the, you know, this is a, a discouraging circumstance, to say the least. And while we're in a fiscally very, uh, uh. Remarkably negative situation with the schools, Mr. Creighton alluded to this earlier, from a teaching and learning perspective. Uh, the Cohasset Public Schools is in an outstanding position and, uh, student achievement is, uh, off the charts. Uh, we have been receiving commendations. We are circulating students to, um, amazing colleges and universities, military academies, Ivy Leagues. For those students that choose to attend college, um, our staff is, that we currently have is innovative. And ambitious and energetic and they're delivering an amazing learning product to our kids. So, um, I do want to leave us with that. I mean, that, and that, and that contributed to that, because I think that with that momentum. We had a desire to add and not reduce, right? Because we're moving in the right direction and, um. Uh, I, I'm very proud of where we're at, if you remove the budget part of it, uh, which is a major part of it. But, um, but obviously the fundamental purpose behind a school is to educate the students and prepare them for adulthood. And I think that we're doing that, uh, in, in excellent fashion, but we need to address this fiscal crisis and, uh, and we will. And we have some great minds here to collaborate with, and I think everyone is coming together, uh, to, uh. To solve this problem in a collaborative fashion.
Thanks so much.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All of you. So what our process is now, we're not going to vote, nor is advisory. Advisory will deliberate. And then once, uh, we receive the results of their deliberation and their vote, we will take a final vote on, um, not only the schools, but, but the whole budget. And so if, um, any of my board members have any questions after this meeting, they can funnel them through me and I'll get them to Craig. And same with Mrs. Estino, um, might be reaching out if her, her, her committee members have any additional questions. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Craig, do you want to adjourn?
Yes, I have a motion to adjourn. A motion has been made by Mrs. Leskey and seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Carr, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, abstentions, motion carries by a vote of three members. We adjourn.
Mrs. Estino, do you want to adjourn?
Yes, could I have motion to adjourn, please?
So move Diane.
And a second?
Second.
Not everybody at once. Okay, roll call, please. Um, Fran Collins.
Aye.
Mike Barclay.
Aye.
Diane Kennedy.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Vince Thornton.
Vince Thornton, aye.
Mark Maggi.
Mark Maggi, aye.
Meg Wheeler.
Meg Wheeler, aye.
Mark Cameron.
Aye.
And Gina Stino, aye. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
We adjourn now?
No, we cannot.
Thought I'd slip that.
All right, so.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, we, we can, we can get through the, the next, next, um, part of the agenda. Kept it light purposely. So, uh, twenty twenty-five annual town meeting warrant review. Chris, there are just three articles you want to talk about?
So these are, uh, annual articles that I've actually reviewed them all. I recommended them each unanimously. This department revolving funds, annual spending limits. Last general law chapter ninety-one liability, which is something we do every year, gets grants and additional real estate exemptions. A variety of real estate exemptions for.
Okay, so would you like us to vote on these?
If you would, uh, again, advisory is recommending with the technical.
Okay. Uh, does anyone have any questions on these three articles?
Well, I should also say, are some things being stricken?
Okay. So it's come off. So, um, because these are three independent articles, we're going to have three separate votes. Um, any questions on Article ten departmental revolving funds, annual spending limits? No questions? Can I have a motion to approve Article ten departmental revolving funds, annual spending limits as presented in the warrant draft? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next article is Article twelve Massachusetts general laws, chapter ninety-one liability. Um, do I, is there any comment or question? Nope. So may I have an, a motion to approve Article twelve Massachusetts general laws, chapter ninety-one liability as presented in the draft warrant?
So move.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Creighton moved it. Mr. Grady seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, gentlemen?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um. And finally, Article thirteen additional real estate exemptions, the annual renewal, um, any comments or questions? Nope. Okay, can I have a motion to approve Article thirteen additional real estate exemptions, annual renewal?
Aye.
The draft warrant.
Moved. So moved.
Mr. Creighton moved it. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Plax, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, town manager update.
So, uh, the one, uh, lots of reviews continued. Uh, that said, we've kind of hit like a, a small. Wall. So my recommendation is the board can sit down next week off. Uh, and then, I think on twenty-fifth, TF, and, and there'll be other articles to be going through. So. Big conversation tonight. Capital is, is moving. They voted a lot of things. C P C is still coming up with the vote, so I think, uh, if, if you're going to take a week off next week, we need to do it, because it's, it's going to be very hot. And I don't think there's a reason to have it all together. Um, I think it still needs to be moderated for the twenty-fifth, and maybe if you have to do it on the first. But the eighth, you should be.
Okay. Is everyone okay with not seeing me on March eighteenth?
I'm not going to say a word. I will not say a word, but I'm fine.
Okay. All right. So, um, thank you for that suggestion, Mr. Senior. We will not meet on March eighteenth.
Next year, we'll, we'll be met on my birthday.
Oh, okay. Well, senior plan that specifically for you. Anything else?
No, that's, that's it.
That's it? Okay. Select board comments, Mr. Plax?
None for me tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Grady?
No, I'm good. I just have a quick question for Chris, Chris, on C P C, um. We have them going up for.
Yeah, March twenty-fourth.
Perfect. Okay. And I have no other comments. Thanks so much.
Okay, so March twenty-fourth will be the presentation of the town hall working groups plan for forty-one Highland Ave to C P C, correct? I encourage everyone to, um, attend and if I need to call a meeting, I mean, we can attend and not deliberate. Uh, we don't need to have, we don't need to call a meeting.
Correct. I have to post it because I'm already there.
That's right, he's on C P C now.
But you're on C P C, but if we just attend. And you speak.
Better to post it.
As, you, you, yeah, we can, we can post it, but yeah, I know Michelle is working on the application. She asked me for, um, what I had said at the last, at the capital budget meeting. So, um. We'll get that all together. Um, select, um, Mr. Creighton, select board comments?
Yes, you know, very briefly, we've just seen a example of what happens when things aren't watched as carefully as they could be and. Not pointing any, uh, fingers. We do have a very important, very high-quality, uh, school system that's functioning, however. That doesn't mean that it is immune from the type of, of budget, um. Discipline that all of us have to do in our own lives. So let's keep an idea so this does not happen again. And you know, not everything is sacrosanct. We got to figure out how to do this. But we do have a good school system and we have good staff. And even though I'm a big supporter of teachers, I didn't want anybody to think that I'm taking, putting my finger on the scale as far as the contract negotiations. We've got to watch that very, very carefully. Thank you.
Mr. Frog? Okay, um, I will, I will just be my usual broken record and let everyone in Cohasset know who's watching or who will watch the, um. The video, once it gets posted, you know, we have multiple openings on a variety of boards and committees and, um. We can't, this town can't work, can't function without the support and the volunteer hours, uh, of our citizens. So I encourage everybody to reach out to any of us if you have questions on any committee, um, to serve. That's it. Well, one more thing, the Cohasset Boys and Cohasset Girls Basketball both made it to the final eight of Division Four and they fell. Uh, they each, uh, lost on Saturday, but that's pretty good. Final eight. And spring sports start up soon. Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the minutes of March fourth, twenty twenty-five?
So move. Second.
Second, is there any conversation or deliberation on them? Second, is there any conversation or deliberation on them?
I will, uh, not vote on this in my usual thing, which is until we, uh, proactively use intelligence, uh, to make it the minutes accurately, then I cannot support them. But I urge my colleagues to figure out working together to make sure our minutes are accurate.
Okay. You weren't present at the meeting, so you wouldn't be able to vote on them anyway. Um, and, um, I will offer again to you, Mr. Creighton, if you want to put it on an agenda item, it was scheduled for early February and you requested it to be withdrawn, we'd be happy to entertain it again. Um, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, all, all opposed? All abstain? Are you abstaining?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Creighton is abstaining. Okay, there are no topics, not reasonably anticipated. Um, we will strike March eighteenth from our schedules next week. And can I have a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-one PM?
So move.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.